Yeah, you'd hope. Everybody did their homework.
Hi. Microphones on everyone?
Jim Highland, can you hear me?
Barely.
How about now?
Much better.
I want to make sure you hear me.
If you guys will talk like that all the time, I'll be run for reelection.
I don't want to blow everybody out.
You won't, trust me.
Not everybody. We'll try to do better.
All right, if everyone's ready. I, no, did you say a no?
Never.
Because no is going to be one in a bunch. And it's usually you, Joe.
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
We just got to get him here five minutes earlier.
All right, it is six thirty and this is the fourth of September twenty eighteen, six thirty P. M. And there's a regular city council meeting with Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding at the meeting. Please join me at this time for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We will have roll call. Councilmember Hattlesstad.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for. Also with us this evening Superintendent of Maintenance Kirby Weckworth and Kurt Mink representing the Arlington Enterprise. Also at the table on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin, on my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. So with that out of the way, we will open, are open for changes in the agenda. I do have a few. Are there any changes that councilmembers have? Few that I have are, let's see, item under announcements, item J, a pre-construction meeting is going to be held this Thursday, September sixth. That is for the Second Avenue Project, Second Avenue and Alley Project, at ten o'clock in the morning, and that'll be read by City Administrator Melvin later. Then the other change would be an, under unfinished business, there was one item that we, that I missed, blew past last meeting, and that is approving or denying the city contribution for twenty eighteen, and that'll be for the fire relief fund of, based on twenty-six active members. And the dollar amount is three thousand four hundred and forty-five. That's figured out, a hundred and thirty-two dollars fifty cents per member. I think, two, no, is that right? Yeah. Hundred and thirty-two and fifty cents per member. So that would go under unfinished business. Any other changes in the agenda? Additions, corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Highland to approve the agenda with the noted changes. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, approval of the August sixth council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August sixth council special workshop meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the August twentieth council meeting minutes. And item D, approval of the bills.
Make motion to approve this consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlesstad to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Seeing no citizens to address the council, I'm going to move right along then into announcements. City Administrator Melvin.
Councilmembers, first announcement that we have is the Arlington Farmer's Market continuing to have obviously not much business today with the rain, but they have been doing very well. I asked for some more information and got some feedback. They have three more markets to go for the year. It'll be ending on September twenty-fourth. Generally, they've been seeing about a hundred plus patrons or shoppers every week. They've got a new program called TasteBuds, which is hands-on tasting and learning experience for children. And they've been seeing upwards of thirty-five kids per night. The TasteBuds program is held once a month. They also have a Hop Hands-on Produce Program where every other week they have a designated hop night where children receive a two-dollar token they can spend on fresh food or vegetables, and they've been seeing about thirty to forty children per week involved in that program. And typically, they've been seeing about eight to thirteen vendors per week participating. So that is, those farmer's markets are on Monday evenings from four to six-thirty here at the Arlington Community Center West Parking Lot. And based on feedback from anyone some, they've been very happy and very satisfied with the turnout that they've had. So would invite anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to stop by and check it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just interject something during the announcements. I just want to give a shout out to Julianne Shaw. She is doing a wonderful job and just working her tail off to make this thing work, and it's working.
It's working.
So I just want to appreciate the effort she's putting forward.
Very enthusiastic person for that position.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
I appreciate that, I was going to commend her too. Moving on, the next item under announcements is the Sibley County Enrichment Program where individuals will provide two hours of technology help for ten dollars. The contact there is Lily Ann, and she can be reached at two-three-seven-four-zero-five-oh, or at lilyann@co.sibley.mn.us. I did inquire as to whether or not they've worked with any Arlington businesses, and unfortunately they haven't. They've worked with some businesses in Gaylord, but haven't had any takers here in Arlington. So if anybody's listening, that would be a great opportunity to get somebody from Arlington to benefit from this service being offered through the county. The next item is the Pro Auto N.Y.A. Bull Riding Event, which is scheduled for Friday, September seventh at seven P. M., as well as Saturday, September eighth at six P. M. here at the Sibley County Fairgrounds. I know in talking with a few people, they are looking for additional volunteers, so if everybody, anybody wants to work at the bull riding event, I know that they certainly are looking, so. Exciting event that's coming up. Next item is a tractor ride benefit for Darren Schultz on Saturday, September twenty-ninth. Registration starts at eight o'clock until ten A. M. at St. Paul's Lutheran Church located at one oh one West Chandler Street. Also received an email from Angela Pagan. She is in process of organizing the Arlington Citywide Garage Sale, which will be September twenty-second through the twenty-third. If you would like to participate, please contact Angela Pagan at a underscore O-one underscore angela@hotmail.com, or A.M.Pagan, P-A-G-G-E-N, at progrowth.com. Thank you for her efforts in getting everybody together to have a citywide garage sale. Next item we have is the Arlington Fire Department's Fall Block Party on Saturday, October sixth, from five P. M. to midnight. They'll have meal and music at the Heritage Building here at the Sibley County Fairgrounds. Item G, Zura Shriners Ho-Ho Area Shrine Club Breakfast on Sunday, October seventh, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty here at the Arlington Community Center. The St. Cloud State Driver Improvement Program is going to be in town on October twenty-ninth. They have several classes available, one of which is a four-hour refresher from five-thirty to nine-thirty for individuals who have recently been through the program, or for those individuals who have not been through the program. They have a meeting scheduled on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth from five-thirty to nine-thirty. Those who are taking it for the first time will have to go through an eight-hour session, whereas those taking the refresher have the requirement of only one four-hour period. Those will be here at the Arlington Community Center, and individuals can inquire with their auto insurance, and in some cases, they are allowed discounts if they have been through the program. So individuals who are interested should contact one-eight-eight-eight-two-three-four-one-two-nine-four, or email www.mnsafetyscenter.org. So save some money on auto insurance by attending this session on driving. Item I, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce is having their Fright Night on Wednesday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty to seven, on Main Street from Highway five to First Avenue. So they'll be on both sides of the street. And then, last but not least, for announcements is the pre-construction meeting for Second Avenue, as well as some alleys. The alleys include an alley located behind West Main Street, going from Second Avenue Northwest to First Avenue North. Also includes Shamrock Drive from Sheila Drive to Marion Drive. Alley behind Clinton Street East from First Avenue to Second Avenue. And then the major part of the project is Second Avenue from Fifth Avenue to West Alden Street. So that pre-construction meeting will occur Thursday, September sixth, at ten A. M. at the Arlington Community Center. So if individuals are concerned or want to know more about what's going on, they are welcome to attend that meeting, ask questions, and hear from the individuals who are planning for that construction project. I have talked with Jason, and we believe that it's probably going to be a day, maybe a day and a half of having the road shut down, so hopefully less interference than a bigger project would be.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the announcements? Moving on to communications.
Councilmembers, in your packet is included a one-page sheet titled two thousand and eighteen ambulance totals. Basically, what this demonstrates is it shows two thousand and eighteen as well as two thousand and seventeen totals. It's got a number of columns. One, first column there is showing what was billed. Two, four services provided. Second column is how much we, as the city, received for the services, how much is left due. And then, as you can see in that fourth column there, is the write-offs. So you see there's a significant amount of write-offs, and I think that, you know, we've had some discussions with members of the ambulance who've questioned, you know, how much money are we making? Even if we try and make more money, if we increase prices, we're oftentimes crippled by the fact that there are arrangements with insurance and different things that will only pay up to a certain maximum amount. So you can see there how much we actually receive. If you look at two thousand and seventeen, we billed out for three hundred and ninety-two thousand, we received two hundred and seven of that. And if you look at where we're at for two thousand and eighteen, we billed out two hundred and twenty-six through the end of June, we've received a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred thousand on that, so. Are there any questions or anything?
On the items that are, so there's money still due, are these billings that are waiting for the patients or the customers to pay?
Yeah.
And how, how do those collections work? Are we on top of that, or?
We typically send them to a collection agency.
Okay.
And so they'll pursue, and they may be able to get some back, and they may not.
Okay.
It's a challenge.
So that's another twenty-five thousand dollars so far this year?
Very true.
Hearing a little bit of feedback on the sound system. I think it was Jim's too, so I'm not sure.
So do we have number of rides? Or a number of, I don't see that on here.
No, we don't. I could certainly get that for you, though.
Be nice to add in here, just so we know.
Yep. I'll revise this and get you another copy, send you another email, do another copy with the number of rides.
Even just add a column, probably?
Yeah.
Just leave, leave the numbers on, but add another column for that?
Yeah.
Right, good point. Any other questions? On the ambulance billing? Okay, move on to the next item.
Next item, I just wanted to make you aware of where we are with our health insurance. I did attend a meeting earlier, well, Thursday of last week, went to the South Central Service Cooperative, and learned there that our health insurance for two thousand and nineteen fortunately is scheduled to go up twenty percent, so.
Wow.
I'm kind of surprised, I guess, I don't believe that we as a group are a real high user of the health insurance program. In two thousand and eighteen, we had it go up over fifteen percent then too, and now to go up another twenty percent is, in my mind, concerning. I have reached out to Todd Zimmerman, who is our third-party administrator, and I'm scheduled to have a conference call tomorrow with Wendell Sandy from the South Central Service Cooperative, to find out why exactly our health insurance rates are going up so drastically. One of the challenges that I've had in the past is trying to get, because we are a smaller group, we have difficulty breaking down and finding out, you know, what's driving our costs, because we're put with a larger group. So I have had difficulty getting numbers to find out why it is that our costs are going up so much. But hopefully, something will come out of my discussion tomorrow about it. Some of the concerning things, you know, we've got a total of nine employees who are on, or eligible for health insurance through the city. Four out of nine have elected not to take health insurance, which is a significant savings to the city. But the numbers are getting down there. Those who do have health insurance, the remaining numbers, four of them have family and one has single insurance. So hopefully, hopefully, we'll try and figure out what's going on more with health insurance and our employees. In two thousand and eighteen, we made the decision, because of the significant increase, to revise the split between city and employee, and we went from a seventy-five, twenty-five split to a sixty, forty. So we'll, there, there are some good things happening with our current insurance, if we choose to stay. I don't know the answer to that at this time, but they are working more on getting some personal health coach, coaching going, some online forums where you can do a lot of tracking of your health. You know, it may be what you're eating, it may be physical activity, different things like that, things that, quite honestly, I was never made aware of in prior years, so I don't know if this is a, a new thing that they're working on, but I believe it is a move in the right direction. Some of this, to qualify for participating in some of these groups, you have to be an individual who is determined to be at risk for heart disease, type-two diabetes, and obesity. So, you know, an individual who's relatively healthy and doesn't fall in there wouldn't qualify to be part of these programs. They also have an online mental health program that individuals can work through, and they're doing something different this year compared to the past. They have oftentimes given, paid a portion of gym memberships. And now that's something that they're doing away with, and they're moving more towards giving people gift certificates and credit for ta, taking steps. So if you want to track your steps, either you have a Fitbit, or you have a cell phone, or something like that, they're moving in that direction. Which, I guess that's what, what their studies have shown, is that more people will use that than they will the gym membership. And it comes at a time when we just had Jen Strack stop over, actually this morning, and indicate that she would be more than happy to give us a tour of their new facilities over there at the school. And that I believe there's a ten-dollar monthly membership that they will be offering. And so I was thinking that would be something that, you know, perhaps some city employees might be interested in, so. But I will update you in terms of that discussion that I have, and I'll be getting together with the Employee Relations Committee and talking about wages and then talking about health insurance, so we can figure out how we're going to deal with those increased costs.
So it's, I'm sorry, Jim?
I was just going to ask, is there a chance we could partner up with maybe some other communities to try and get a bigger group? With that, I mean, I don't know how this insurance would work, if we could partner up with Gaylord or Green Isle or Glenn Coe or somebody like that, get more numbers?
But isn't that what this is already?
Yeah, we are, we are put in with a larger group, so that's.
How about if we go to South Dakota and Oklahoma?
Yeah, that group probably won't take those.
Hopefully, they're healthier.
I, I guess my question is kind of along the same lines. I mean, if we have somebody that researches different groups and cooperatives for us, why aren't we seeing any other things coming in? We're just seeing stuff from South Central, like we're locked into just this place?
No, we're not.
I, I understand, but I mean, it feels like we are, because we're not getting any other kind of bids or numbers from anybody else, so. It'd be interesting to see numbers from someplace else, other than this. And do we have somebody that's our go-to guy?
Yep, Todd Zimmerman. Typically, he does run numbers, so run numbers for, you know, two or three additional groups, and Blue Cross Blue Shield in the past has been the lowest rate, so.
Is this all through the, the South Central though, or is this other?
The additional quotes that he brings up are outside of, of.
Outside of South Central, just on that group?
Yeah, yeah.
And my, my employer uses the same person, and ours is going up twenty percent too. I don't take it there, but through the same, it's not this company or whatever, but it's the same person, Todd, yeah.
Well, that's kind of a red flag, I think, I don't know.
Gaylord's health insurance went up, up, I believe, nine percent from what Lori told me. I did send out an email to Winstead, Glenn Coe, Wentworth, Green Isle, asking everybody to let me know what their health insurance rates are increasing for two thousand and nineteen, to see if everybody else is experiencing it, or if it's just us. And, yeah, then I think if we need to, we'll toss the net out and start looking to see if there's, because there, in, in my mind, I'm a little bit concerned, because when we, when our health insurance went up so much last time, you know, there maybe should have been some, some more discussion, and I guess that's where I rely on our third-party administrator to say, hey, you know, your health insurance rates are really, you know, they went up significantly less, significantly in two thousand and eighteen, let's see if there aren't some things that we can get going to try and help you bring those costs down. But yeah, the only time I really have interaction with him is unfortunately, when he hands me a piece of paper and says your insurance rates are going up.
Well, I don't think he's doing a service to the city then, in my opinion.
And I agree. I agree, I think it's more than just renewal time, it's what we should be doing in between there. And I know we have reached out to the county to ask them, can we participate in your wellness program? In talking with Jen Strack this morning, I did inquire with her, is there a chance that we can, you know, work together? And if you guys have, she told me they have about three or four different events throughout the year, one of which is, you know, simple as drinking a lot of water that they do, and then people track, and there may be surprises. And I said, you know, would the city be able to participate in that? You know, we would probably chip in some money to, you know, pay for city employees, but in a lot of that stuff, there isn't a lot of expense, so.
What did you find out?
She's receptive to it.
You know, because we do pay part of her salary, we should be able to reap some benefits from that.
I, well, yeah, that's through the school or whatever, I know we do different things, probably monthly or whatever, that there's challenges.
Yeah.
At the school that they do. And then they offer like, you know, gift cards and such for the winner of whatever challenge. But, I mean, I guess that's what's sticking with, with these guys. I, I just really feel we need to like search around. I don't know when we have to sign, but I'm sure there's time yet to kind of.
And I don't think it costs you anything to search.
Look around.
I mean, if you, if everybody's twenty percent higher than, everybody's twenty percent higher, but at least we know that.
But I mean, if, what you said was only nine percent higher, higher Gaylord?
Gaylord.
So I mean, not everybody is twenty percent higher.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. Why is Gaylord at maybe nine, and Arlington at twenty?
And I can tell you that, well, we're on a different schedule at school, I think. Ours, mine renews every July, and mine did not change that much.
I mean, if we had, if Arlington had a lot of claims, medical claims in, I would then understand more than Gaylord's or somebody else's. I would understand that increase, but I'm questioning, we have that many claims? So why the difference in the increase? Which hopefully that Todd can answer.
Yeah, and.
Or needs to answer.
In the past, when I've asked the question about, you know, what's going on with our claims, I've been told that it's awfully difficult with HIPAA privacy laws to really get into, figure out, okay, here's specifically what's happening in Arlington, because Arlington is lumped into this group with, I don't know how many other employees. But I think that we should, that's the only way we can really try and take steps proactively to make healthier employees, is to know what's going on with them. That's kind of the challenges.
I mean, some of them health program, those are, those are good or all, you know, but, I mean, I think all the insurance companies offer most of that stuff, so I think at least to our employees, the most important thing is cost, and to us, and to us too.
Right.
I mean, if you have a family and it costs you half your check to, for insurance, that's.
Right.
I've got to believe all those, all those programs are cost, that's part of the twenty percent.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, that's built in.
And, yeah.
And if they gave you a twenty percent reduction for joining, well, everybody signs up, but I'm sure they're not.
No. Right.
Well, they should be able to give us the total cost of claims paid out for our group, not necessarily individuals.
Right.
But I would think they could come up with, you know, we paid out fifty thousand dollars this last year for the city of Arlington.
Right.
And forty thousand for Gaylord and a hundred thousand for Green Isle.
You know, I think there were, a few years ago, we seen something like that, and I can't remember who presented it, if it was Shannon, or who it was, I can't remember who presented it, but it was, I think, claims from, you know, a long time ago that are still on the books, from like electrical.
It was a worker's comp.
Yep, workers' comp stuff.
We know who that is, but at least they could go back and say, you know, this is what you've got on the books yet.
Right.
But that shouldn't make last year's increase, if that was the situation, then I would think the fifteen percent last year would maybe be fifteen percent again, not another five percent boost. would maybe be fifteen percent again, not another five percent boost. There's something else, I agree with what you're saying, there's gotta be something else driving that.
Or if it's just easy enough for him to hand us a piece of paper and we'll sign up on it.
Then they may think that.
Well, I mean, I don't know the answer until we get other quotes from other, I mean, we look for quotes for everything. Why not this?
Now, you had indicated Gaylord is going up nine percent. It seems to me that Gaylord went up twenty last year, so. I don't know if I'm right enough. If you would happen to talk to Lori, ask her what their increase was last year. Ours was, we're looking at our increases fifteen for this year and twenty for next year. What was their increase last year? And, you know, maybe they had a bigger bump last year.
Yeah, but even so, I think we're still up a bit more than them yet.
Yeah. No, yeah, I, I certainly don't wanna discourage looking for better, better rates, but.
Cause, cause I mean, we still have time, it's not till January one.
Correct.
Yeah, I think enrollment probably starts in November sometime, most of these programs for the following year.
There's still time, I think.
But yeah, there would be time, sure.
No, based on the renewal information I got, we're supposed to respond later than November first. So we have September and October.
Two months, two months.
Yep.
Figure out where, what else is out there and if this is our best deal, then we turn our efforts towards different things to bring down that cost. Yeah, it was quite disappointing to realize it was going up that much.
Okay. Anything else on that subject? If not, we'll move on to item number eight, the Maintenance Department. Mr. Wickworth.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay.
All good news, huh?
All good news, yep. Just gonna tell you the bad news. No, okay, so getting right into it. Uh, last month, the budget and the CIP work was going on. We held Community Center Committee, Cemetery Committee, Parks Committee, Streets Committee meetings to discuss budget items and CIP items. I guess maybe a couple of highlights, we discussed street signs, uh, street lighting and maybe a couple of equipment replacement. Uh, third summer help next year for this department and possibly a higher budget in tree removal. Trimmed all the alleyways up, those were really getting overgrown. Lot of phone calls with contractors, trying to get some curb work put together. Curb and parking lot striping should be done next week or by the end of next week. Slab jacking, uh, that's in our agenda tonight, trying to line that up. Uh, getting CIP equipment pricing. Over on East Douglas and First Avenue North, it was brought to my attention that that stretch there along East Douglas is pretty dark. And one of those light poles was on the northeast corner of Saint Paul's parking lot. And it was one of those lower acorn, uh, light poles. And it was suggested we put in an overhead, uh, light, street light that would light up better and shed more light. Uh, so we got that done, got LED head on it. And also, uh, down on the corner of Second Avenue and East Douglas, we put an LED head on that as well, so that stretch should be brighter. And even a couple of residents walked over when we were working on it, us and McLeod. And yeah, they agreed it, it was really dark over there, so I think they were happy to see that we were improving that. And with all the foot traffic from football games and sporting events, that should help out with that too. Uh, we painted crosswalks around town, just got a couple extra, well, a couple of intersections, not quite done yet. Caught up on some tree trimming requests. Been coordinating and planning with the DNR Tree Grant for the fall tree planting. Looks like we'll do approximately fifty-five to sixty trees. Um, that'll be, it looks like it'll probably be October eighteenth over the MEA weekend. Uh, the four H will be helping us out along with Conservation Corps, uh, volunteer group from the cities. Uh, we waxed the community center floor, have to do the hallway yet, but we got the big rooms done last week anyways. Surveillance is up at the Four Seasons Park around the Lion Center building. And a couple of cameras, uh, on our ice rink shelter and also on the park. Uh, also along with that, Neusmeier Electric fixed our security lighting. There was some kinda issue there where our lights that are supposed to stay on all night on the, one on the park and then one on our American flag. They went out, I don't know if it happened during the construction last year or what happened, but he anyways got that straightened out. So our security lighting is, and we swapped out bulbs to, to LED bulbs, which are supposed to be a lot more efficient, use a lot less energy. Looking ahead, I want to get a street sign inventory done. I cannot find anything in our cabinets at the shop on that.
On the directional signs?
On the direct, the street.
Avenue and street names, numbers?
Yeah, I can't find anything on that, but I think we're looking at maybe just budgeting in the CIP to do sections at a time and get those done. But I wanna get a idea of all the other signs as well, that might be fading or cracking. Been coordinating with Chief, Police Chief John Pedersen on school zone signage, uh, for twenty mile an hour on school zone signs, where we're gonna place those. Still gonna be doing some hot patching this year, once some of the other street work is caught up, the catch basin work, uh, the water box work and hopefully some curb work. Uh, we're gonna get bumper, uh, bumpers installed on the ambulance overhead doors along the brick this fall yet. This Thursday, I'll be starting leading Sibley, uh, so I'll actually miss the pre-construction meeting for Second Avenue, I realized. And next week, Steve Truckey Construction should, tentatively should start, uh, the repair on the uptown pavers next week. And that's, can I, any questions or concerns or?
I see you got new signs out at the dump.
Oh yeah, we got signs at the dump.
Great, great job there.
Been sitting in the shop.
Don't we use the security camera out there anymore? I know, we haven't been used to that.
And I, I'm sitting on my desk right now, I wanna get that out there before the fall rush starts.
I always try to smile when I go by. I can't, there's nobody to smile to.
It's amazing how many pictures it will rack up.
But I know those signs should help out there.
I hope so.
Are they cemented yet?
Uh, they're staked in with some big tent stakes.
Pretty heavy duty.
They're, yeah, they're pretty sturdy, I think it would take a pretty strong wind.
That should help. It's obvious where you should dump the stuff, but I know the office is all there. It still gets, yeah, branches with dirt and.
Yeah, do what you can to try to alleviate the confusion.
The sign should cure the problem, hopefully.
Okay, there are two items down in business. Um, if with the council's approval, I would like to move down and take care of those. They've been a directly or involved, or Superintendent Wickworth is directly involved with them. In the way we have any questions, we can ask him now, is that okay with the council?
Yep.
All right. Let's move down then to item eleven, uh, in regard to the slab jacking. If you wanna explain that a little bit, Kirby, and then we can deal with that.
I was recommended to look into slab jacking for our patios, uh, by the Community Center Committee. Uh, our, our patios on the south side of the building, um, are really sinking very badly. And so we really need to get that repaired, uh, to keep the water from flowing back into the foundation. So that's a part of that, um, bid. And along with that, I had him look at some sidewalk repair as well. And most of these spots are where trees, tree trunks are pushing up sidewalk. And I wanted to know if he thought what slab jacking, whatever he does, if that works with that. And he said, oh yeah, he does a lot of lifting up sidewalks where the trees are. And these are healthy trees, um, you know, it's just gonna create a little bit of a slant. But, um, it's not gonna be a crazy grade or anything. It's just trying to lift up the sidewalk and feather out the sidewalk and make it all even, to get rid of trip hazards. That's the main goal, is to try to get rid of some of those trip hazards. We got a lot of bad ones around town, three, four inches high, some of them. Um, there's spots where maybe we even gotta replace the sidewalk or tear it out. But he's able to actually do quite a bit of sidewalk and, you know, fixing with that.
So do they use the same process, both companies?
Yeah, from what I understood. And the one company, I don't know, he, this seemed good to me because he included, you know, the discount in the community center, he included the west side as well. Uh, I know we looked into potentially building a patio or something over there or adding onto it and then jacking that up then, but.
So this includes both?
He threw it in both, we can pick and choose whatever we want to do, yeah.
I mean, for twelve, it's twelve fifty, it looks like, right?
That's the other company, I think, right?
Fifteen hundred for the added on community center. The east, the east patio has to be done no matter what.
Right, but I mean, fifteen hundred bucks, I, I don't know when we're gonna, but if we do put the patio out there, I don't know when we're gonna do that. You know, so I mean, if it's, it's not five, ten thousand dollars, I think it should be, should be done, cause it is a trip hazard and damages, damages the building.
Yeah, the foundation, yeah, in my mind, it's just gotta be done.
Right.
Yeah, his bid for forty-six seventy-five includes that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
And Kirby, do you just wanna make the distinction? I know you had sent me an email just indicating that where the funding was coming from.
Oh, sure.
Portion of it will be coming.
Well, in the CIP, there's, in the other, uh, the infrastructure, there's sidewalk repair for, I believe it was twenty-five thousand a year. So, um, I think like twenty-seven hundred of that would be covered by that. And then, uh, fifteen hundred would go to, no, it was more than that. The rest would, well, the rest would go to community center, but yeah.
So just to give you an update on the, on the patio discussion, um, individual from Voss had stopped over and talked with Annie and I about providing us with a quote as to what it would cost to, uh, basically tear that up and expand and put new concrete down there. That was probably about a month and a half ago and I don't believe we've heard back from that individual. Also, Tim Hagan Miller knew of somebody that would do kind of a landscaping project like that, but we haven't been able to get that name yet, so. Things have been slowed down quite a bit, so maybe with that in mind, maybe do just.
Well, yeah, and if you look at, I guess, look at it closer, it's only six hundred dollars. Cause it's nine hundred for the one and it's fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
There was a fifteen hundred more, I can, it's fifteen hundred.
On the sidewalk, the.
Fifteen hundred more.
Fifteen hundred more, yeah, it's still not.
If the trees pushing up, and I understand it has to be fixed. I would assume we're just buying time till the root hits again. Because if they jack it up four inches, this, the root gets four more inches of diameter, we're pushing the side.
Yep.
But I believe it's a band-aid.
It's a band-aid till we take the tree down.
Yeah, we don't have the budget to do that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, that's what's happening. We're just gonna do a band-aid job until we can sadly have to.
Yeah, I would think it would last, I guess, you don't know.
Six, seven years.
I would hope it lasts some years, yeah. Before, I mean, the definition of our trip hazard in our ordinance is one inch.
Yeah.
Before we should act on it.
I, I understand we have to do it, I just.
Yeah, some of these are, these are bad spots, really bad. It, it would save, it saves a lot more money than ripping it all up, cutting a tree down, taking a stump out.
Oh.
I mean, that, when you talk about that and then replacing concrete, it's.
Tens of thousands.
It's, right, it's, it doesn't even compare, so. I know this guy, he just, some of these top cities, he just goes in yearly, they got a budget for him and he does this for, repairs it almost on a yearly basis. Uh, he seems to have a good reputation.
I know somebody that has used him and they're really satisfied and I've, I've seen the work he did and it's been a year ago and it's, everything is, is straight yet.
Okay, yeah, he said he does work in Arlington, a lot of driveways and stuff like that.
I'll make a motion to approve this slab jacking, um, repair to the sidewalks and patio at the community center and around town, um, by slab jacking specialties at a cost of forty-six seventy-five with funding through the Maintenance Department, twenty eighteen budget.
I'll second that.
If we can just remove that last portion there, because like Kirby indicated earlier, a portion of it will be paid for.
I'll amend it by saying, uh, with the Maintenance Department and Community Center funding, street department, streets, what that?
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batriste, second by Councilmember Haddelstedt to approve the, and accept the, or the quarter price from specialties, slab jacking special, specialties at a cost of four thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. And the work that they will do is spelled out on the copy that was sent to you in your packet. Excuse me. Is there any questions, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion is carried. And then, um, approve or deny purchase of the twenty nineteen Ford F three fifty?
Uh, yeah. Oh, well, I just wanna, would like to know, and I did reach out to Brow first. And he, from what I understand, what he indicated was, so we're trying to replace our one-ton pickup. And the way he made it sound was Chevy does not build a one-ton that doesn't have duals in the back. Which, I don't know, I'm not.
That sounds weird.
That sounds strange, but.
That's what he told them.
So I'm going based on that, I, and I reached out to Tim Hagen Miller and asked him about snow plow trucks, what he knows. And he said he will never use anything other than a Ford. He's used Chevys in the past and other vehicles and he said the Fords are the Cadillac when it comes to snow plowing. Based on that, I mean, that's a pretty big important usage of our trucks, uh, for, you know, a lot of months out of the year. Uh, I would like Brow to know when we will replace our three-quarter ton truck. We will, you know, first reach out to him and try to stay in town. So I thought the next best thing would be at least stick to somewhere close by, we need warranty work or anything like that. And that was Wolf and Lesure.
It's Wolf Motors.
Wolf Motors, yeah.
It's a misspelling, W-O-L-F.
And the plow's a brand-new plow.
Plow is a brand-new plow. What's with that too, that's going into twenty years of usage. Uh, we, last couple of years have been having to maintain it, we've had trouble with it when it's really cold out, not working. It's our secondary plow, but a lot of these snows nowadays, you need to call in that third guy. And, and it winds up saving us time and money to get three people, you know, two trucks out there plowing and then me in the, in the, in the loader with the blower. So our other plow would essentially become our secondary, but still be used probably quite a bit. And, uh, I just, I don't, it would, I can't justify putting on an old beat-up, you know, seen its day plow. It would, I can't justify putting on an old beat-up, you know, seen its day plow on a, a new pickup, I guess, and. Whether we're getting a new pickup or not, we had to look into getting a new plow. And in the CIP, we were slated to get a new skid steer this year for thirty-eight grand and a utility vehicle for seventeen. And I couldn't justify the usage for those on a consistent basis to purchase those. In talking with the other departments in our CIP budget meetings, uh, the cemetery and the parks were completely fine with us using. The money that was for that other equipment for a new truck and new plow, so.
So we're just, if we, if we get this truck, we're just taking from the two other that was slated for.
Yeah.
And that's going to cover this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll have a few grand left over.
And this will replace the one-ton that we now have?
Right, the white Chevy nineteen ninety-eight thirty-five hundred.
But we're keeping that?
Uh, that?
Or?
Uh, I can't even get anybody to take that in the trade-in, so.
Tool.
Probably auction.
Okay.
Um.
Sealed bid, sealed bid type thing.
Or sealed bid, yeah, however you do it.
Is that gonna have the plow on it?
We can put the plow on it, um, so this price is actually with, they've offered three hundred bucks for the plow, Chris Steele did for trade-in, um.
Wouldn't you?
If you add three hundred, it would be sixty, sixty-three, sixty-six would be the price of this. And then we could put the plow with the white pickup as a package for a bid or, or a auction.
I would think we would be better off to keep the plow with the truck.
Yeah.
For only getting three hundred dollars.
Right.
The plow's gotta have that value if it goes with the truck.
Is it V plow?
It's a V plow, yeah.
Oh my gosh, three hundred dollars?
Yeah, I'd keep, keep plow.
That'll be much more attractive package with the plow.
Oh, yeah.
Come October, November with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we set it out front with, uh, sealed bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like we did with the squad car.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You know, we ended up getting thirty-two hundred dollars more than we're offered for trade-in, twenty-two hundred dollars more.
Yeah, by far, that.
Yeah.
Can't let that plow go for three hundred bucks.
Uh, Kirby, when do you think the truck would be here, at this time?
Uh, relatively soon, I think in a couple, a week or two.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, and then how long for them to get the plow and everything?
This is a, oh, whoops, it's a twenty eighteen Ford.
Oh, okay.
It's an eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Another month to get the plow on by Chris Steele or not that long?
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess, uh, I didn't get that far in the discussion, but I'm sure we could get it down there.
Doesn't take long to put the plow on.
No, it's just, this time of year, I imagine they're busy.
So we'll keep the plow in the truck and sell it as a package deal in sealed bids or something?
I think so, yeah, that, that seems the wisest way to go there. But we'd, we'd actually add three hundred dollars to that plow price then. Be sixty, sixty-three, sixty-six.
One other question before you, Michelle?
Sure.
Trade the delivery or something for a hundred thirty-five? On the Chris Steele call?
I don't have that with me, so, yeah, they, that would be for their delivery.
So they would come pick it up, then put the plow on, then bring it back?
They would bring the plow up.
Oh, they would bring the plow here and then put it on here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, nice.
You good?
Good.
So then Kirby, just to clarify, so you, even after we sell this truck, you'll have a secondary backup?
Yeah, that would be our, right, our two thousand one.
Two thousand one.
Three-quarter ton, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty eighteen Ford F three fifty series pickup for thirty thousand one twenty-six seventy-two from Wolf Motors. And installation of a Bosby XTV plow for six thousand sixty-three dollars, sixty-six cents on state bid from Crystal Truck Equipment.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Cowell to approve the purchase of the, uh, twenty eighteen Ford F one, three fifty series pickup. And also for the Bosby XTV plow. The pickup, uh, price, thirty thousand one twenty-six seventy-two, the plow price, six thousand sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, is that right? Six zero six six, six zero six three, six six. Yeah, six thousand sixty-three dollars, sixty-six cents from Chris Steele. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion is carried. Thank you, Kirby.
Kirby, just one question before you leave, I know I heard from one of your staff and I, you and I had talked about pretty much concerns about the Memorial Park.
Yes, sorry about that, ah, okay, I should've brought that up in my update, um. But a couple people, uh, concerned, I think it's, I think it got brought up by the guy who paints the helicopter. To our lawnmower, actually, who brought it to me, who said, uh, we got a couple bigger trees growing by our helicopter in Memorial Park, uh, ash trees. Um, and if, they're healthy at this point, but if anything were to ever happen, a storm or storm damage and it was fall on the helicopter and damage it or destroy it. He said, you're nev, probably never gonna get another helicopter again.
I agree with that.
And, uh, it would be, he thought it would be wise for us to just take those trees down and eliminate the risk for damaging it. And, uh, you know, I, looking at it, yeah, those trees, they're healthy, but they're kinda packed in there too and they almost block the view of it a little bit, uh. And I, I think that's, it's in a park, me and Mike could even cut that down, pull it down, they're big trees, but. Me and Mike could probably handle that this fall if that's something that we would wanna do.
That's something you might wanna run past the, uh, Parks Committee, just so they know.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And give it their stamp of approval.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
But it certainly seems to have a good cause.
Yeah, I think so, once you think about it, I mean, hate to see anything happen to that.
I would say if you.
Kind of landmark for us.
Take down a couple trees, probably have a plan in where you're gonna replant a couple of trees?
Yeah, yeah, I actually got a cou, in our tree grant, a couple plotted out, a couple spots to replace, get a couple like trees in there. But there is a lot of big trees around.
Yeah, some big old ones.
Right, yeah, so, maybe some trimming, maybe cut a couple down, but yeah, I'll run it past the parks.
Yeah, just so they're, so they don't sit back and say, who, what, what's that all about?
Sure.
Or why, you know, so, okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Alright, um, moving back up to reports, boards and committees, we have the, um. Approval or denial of the city contribution to the fire department relief fund, is it, is it to the fire relief fund now?
Yes.
Saying that correctly?
Yes.
Fire relief fund?
Yeah.
And this is something, it was just an oversight from last meeting, there was a presentation by, uh, two or three gentlemen from the fire department and, uh. We just, I just didn't follow through on this approval, so, um, open for discussion? And again, it would be a, um, contribution of a hundred and thirty-two dollars fifty cents per twenty-six active members. For a total of three thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
So that's just above what they normally get, correct?
That's approving what they get.
Oh, just approving it?
Yeah.
This is something we do every year.
I'll make a motion to approve, how much is it, a hundred?
Thirty-four, forty-five.
Hundred and thirty?
Hundred and thirty-two fifty.
Hundred and thirty-two fifty per member based on twenty-six members to the fire relief fund.
Second. Motion by council member Cowell, second by council member Highland to approve the, um, contribution to the fire relief fund. For three thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars, that's based on twenty-six active members, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per member. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried. Moving on to item nine, resolutions, the first resolution dealing with the county project, uh, road project.
Resolution fifty-four dash two thousand eighteen is seeking your approval. The county is planning to, uh, at some, probably in twenty twenty, replace the bridge. Uh, we've already approved them to go ahead and, and do some of the, uh, uh, roadwork earlier. And so, provided in your packet are copies of the plans, uh, that they have for the bridge. And in talking with Tim Becker, he asked that we go ahead and approve it at this time so that they can put it on their calendar. And, uh, take steps to make sure that, that does happen in twenty twenty, so, um. It'll be paid for by the, the county, uh, we just have to approve that they can go ahead and do the work within the municipal limits department.
So was there gonna be, looking at the plans, I don't see, but was there gonna be like a walking path or a bike path or room, room for such on that bridge? I know when we first started talking about it a long time ago, there was gonna be either a pedestrian or a bicycle. Room for, for that, so I just wanna make sure before we pass this, that, that does have that on there.
I do, I do remember that was part of it too.
Mm-hmm, and looking at the plans, I don't see it, I just see two lanes.
Was it, there's will be an eight-foot width on both sides of the road?
Yep.
Um.
That would be it.
Okay.
Eight foot on each side of the road according to those plans.
Yeah. For a walkway, would that be consistent with what you're looking for? Michelle?
Well, I just wanna make sure that there's room for a walkway or a bike path, whatever we designated as.
Be used for either or.
Absolutely, yep, there's a lot of traffic that's walking down there or moving down that way.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're gonna redo a bridge, now's the time to make sure that it's.
I would think with eight feet on each side, there would be great plenty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution fifty-four twenty eighteen, approving county projects within the, um, municipal corporate limits.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Cowell to approve resolution fifty-four dash twenty eighteen, approving county projects within the municipal corporate limits. Any further discussion? So the rumor that they're gonna make it a toll bridge is totally false.
And no roundabout it.
No roundabout.
Roundabout.
I can go for that then. Any discussion, hearing none?
I just wanted to bring a point that it is a copyrighted, uh, title, uh, it should, it, the National Night Out is the copyrighted title. And any symbols and whatever.
We aren't on that one, we're on, uh.
I'm sorry.
Hey, above, but.
I thought you were there.
I will call, I will call on you for that comment in a few minutes.
It's still highway and banned.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion then is for the, uh, county project within municipal corporate limits, any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Highland?
Yes.
Council member Batch?
Yes.
Council member Byszewski?
Yes.
Council member Haddelstead?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Uh, just one sidelight on that, I thought, I remembered that they were going to mill and overlay that same road from the bridge back to Main Street. Anybody remember that?
Something, and.
And I thought they were gonna do it this year, I wonder if.
Yes.
Maybe they backed that up till next year?
There was.
With the bridge project being the year after?
It was discussed at one of our council meetings that portion was going to be done this summer and the bridge was gonna be done next, next summer.
Next, they backed them both up a year. When the bridge is done, by the way, that will be one heck of a, I mean, that's gonna be a, a number of weeks, if not more. Uh, with some serious detours.
Yep.
So, just so everyone's aware of that. Alright, now we'll move on to, uh, item B, approve resolution fifty-five dash twenty eighteen, donations to the twenty eighteen Arlington National Night Out. Council member Byszewski, would you like to make your comment?
Yes, uh, being involved with the planning of this event, we were, uh, and, and all the information that I received. It said the National Night Out is a copyrighted title and we cannot use it without paying for it.
I remember that.
And, and so, just be careful whenever we talk about the event, that we're calling it Arlington Night Out, which is not.
Yeah.
National Night Out.
So there is an expense for the National Night Out organization?
If you start promoting it that way, yes.
Yes, you're, you're using.
Yeah.
If you're using their name or their.
Okay.
I've heard other communities, um, do the same by calling it their own, like, instead of National Night Out, they call it something else. Either their community night out or not even night out, something else.
Might it be appropriate in regard to this resolution and from here going forward to just call it Arlington Night Out, strike the word national?
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would agree.
I was headed toward.
Okay.
I'll, um, make a motion to approve resolution fifty-five twenty eighteen, accepting donations for the twenty, is it twenty eighteen Arlington Night Out at Four Seasons Park.
You second?
I'll second it.
And ju, just to point out for the, uh, night out, there were a lot of, uh, donations, uh, from various businesses as well as cash donations. Overall, a total of one thousand seven hundred and four, uh, dollars were raised. And the expenses were one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars, meaning that the Arlington Night Out event did, uh, make money. And had a wonderful, uh, group participating in, uh, fun activities and gaining other neighbors, so.
Mm-hmm.
In my mind, was a great success and hopefully the police department, through all their work and efforts to put it together, will do it again next year.
Very good, any other comments?
Thanks to Heidi Jew.
Heidi Jew, she's the.
It's the third year she's been leading it up.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other comments, discussion? Um, the resolution was introduced by council member Batch, second by councilman Byszewski, and then is resolution fifty-five dash twenty eighteen. Uh, a resolution accepting donations for the twenty eighteen Arlington Night Out at the Four Seasons Park. The word national is struck from the title? Okay, roll call, vote, council member Haddelstead?
Yes.
Council member Batch?
Yes.
Council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Byszewski?
Yes.
Council member Highland?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the motion or the resolution is adopted. Alright, moving down to unfinished business, um. The hiring of the administrative assistant.
Very happy to, uh, inform everybody that, uh, uh, we did do interviews and we have moved ahead with, uh, uh, making, uh, an offer to Laura Dykoff. Who is an Arlington resident, uh, currently is working in Lesur and, uh, uh, has great backgrounds and real strengths. Uh, working with, uh, as a legal assistant and we think she would be a great, wonderful fit for the assistant, the administrative assistant position. So, um, we have talked with her, she has accepted the offer, uh, based on your direction from an earlier council meeting. Uh, she is being provided with prorated benefits through the end of two thousand eighteen. Prorated benefits include a prorated health insurance, uh, pediatric dentr, dental, if that applies. Social security and Medicare as well as para and workers' compensation, so. Those are the benefits that she'll have through the end of, uh, two thousand eighteen and will be hired at a rate of fourteen dollars an hour. Uh, she's very excited and in talking with her, I'm very excited to have her come on board, I think she's, uh, got a good background, uh, attention to detail. Works a lot with processes and has, uh, has a desire to help Arlington achieve some great things, so. Uh, very happy to have her come on board, she is planning to come on board on September seventeenth. In the meantime, we'll work on getting her, um, through a background and then also working on some of the IT email address and some different things. So that when she's ready to come in, she can get around running, so.
I think we, of the candidates we were had, we were very fortunate to get Laura.
Yes.
Because I think she fills everything we need. And she's local. And hopefully will be with us for a while.
Yes, yep. She had some stories to tell us about TSE, she worked there prior to that. So she's worked with Tony Nairud in the law office. So she's got a, a good history and some good skills that I think would be very beneficial. So, thank you for your support and going forward with that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions in regard to the new hire? If not, we entertain a motion to approve of the hiring of the administrative assistant.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Laura Dykoff as the new administrative assistant.
Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Haddelstead, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve of the hiring of administrative assistant position, and that would be Laura Dykoff. Start date is again October seventeenth? September seventeenth, I'm sorry. September seventeenth, start date, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, moving now to new business, um, let's see, we've got the first two items taken care of, eleven and twelve, we'll go to thirteen. Uh, truth and taxation, public hearing date.
As required by the state, we have to, uh, set a public hearing date for a discussion about our budget as part of transparency efforts. So just looking for a motion to go ahead and set that for December third at six P.M. In the Arlington Council Chambers.
I'll make a motion to set the truth and taxation public hearing date and time for December third, two thousand eighteen, at six P.M. in the council chamber.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchra to set the truth and taxation public hearing date and time for December third, two thousand eighteen, at six P.M. at the Arlington City Council Chambers. Any further questions, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Councilmember Committee updates.
Cable commission, essentially nothing. Street committee, we haven't met. Police committee, we haven't met.
Okay. Anything else?
We got a lot of meetings this month. I think, well, yeah, I think everything's meeting, so.
I see that, yeah.
I'd be busy.
Okay, no updates? I did, um, meet with some of the people at the Sibley County Fair Board out by the horse arena to review some of their drainage issues there. And, uh, it looks like they have a good plan in place and hopefully it'll take some pressure off of the surrounding areas. Great.
Just, just to give you a little bit of an update, uh, where we are with budgeting. Uh, so the city has until the end of September to approve a preliminary levy. Uh, whatever that number is, you can certainly go down from there, but you cannot go any higher. Uh, I've been working with the budget, uh, taking a look at two thousand seventeen, uh, what we actually spent there through our audit. I've got the numbers so I can compare what we budgeted and what we actually incurred in two thousand seventeen. Been also working on updating a capital improvement plan, which Kirby spoke a little bit about. And, uh, just today I did get off the phone with, uh, Tom Olinger and, uh, asked if it, uh, you know, once I get that all worked out, if I could go ahead and send a copy to him and he would just take a look at it, since this is my first time going through the budget. Uh, my hope is that I'll have a lot of, have a lot of things kind of squared away by the end of this week. We've got the, uh, finance committee meeting to talk about employee wages and health insurance. We also have the finance committee, uh, to talk about the capital improvement plan. So my thought is from there, we'll have some numbers. And then I think our real work will come in probably over the next couple of months, prior to December, as we try and figure out what items are a top priority and what items we maybe, uh, aren't able to, to get done. So, um, obviously I wish I would have started sooner and, you know, want to get kind of a, a routine each year of how we go about doing that. But, uh, uh, being the first year, we'll, we'll get through it and we'll get those numbers and we'll, we'll go from there. So, uh, if anybody has any special requests in terms of, of how we do it, please let me know and I'm certainly receptive to that. I'm thinking that we'll have to have a workshop. My, my goal and my hope is that we can have a preliminary levy approved on September seventeenth. If for some reason we get into a crunch, uh, there is a option for us to schedule a special meeting. Uh, again, the levy has to be, the preliminary levy has to be set by the end of the month. So we could buy ourselves another week, week and a half if we have to, so.
Anyone? Any input for the budget process? You know what's next? Would somebody make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Cowell to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned, seven forty-eight.
I'm going to bed.
Enjoy it, it might only be one meeting.
Tessa will say, what, why are you home so early?
Watch out, Dykoff, here we come. Am I recording?